All right. Good evening. It's Thursday, April 22nd. This is the regular meeting of the governing body of Spring Hill. Our first order of business as always is our invocation. Madam Clerk, do we have a member of the clergy with us tonight?
It does not look like it was supposed to.
All right. Those of you who wish to, please stand and join us in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this opportunity to come together as a people to make decisions that honor you and your will and that help to advance the needs of all members of our community. We appreciate the guidance and the support and the love of our community, and we appreciate all that you do for us. In Christ's name, we pray, amen. Please continue standing for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Leighton. And for the audience, Mr. Leighton is attending via telephone. Mr. Owen?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum present.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item is approval of the agenda. I am tabling item number eight. I had a telephone conversation with a business near the area of the rezoning and would like staff to do a little bit more investigation and get back to us. So I'm just going to ask that that move to the next agenda. Does the council have any requested additions or deletions?
No, sir.
No.
Would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion at a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero zero. Next item is citizen participation. This is an opportunity in the meeting for residents to address the council on items not already on the agenda. Anyone wishing to do so, we just ask that you step up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have the council's attention. Mr. Hawley, you have signed up. Your full address for the record?
One zero nine three.
All right. Thank you.
In our meeting last time, I met with the mayor to discuss body camera footage about legal tow. And honestly, I find it kind of embarrassing that the city wouldn't procure a laptop to be able to watch said videos. So I brought a laptop today.
Well, we're not, we're not going to watch the video here. You had provided the information that we were looking for. I sent that to the police chief, and I asked her to work with the manufacturer of those body cameras to get some information for us. We don't have any information back yet, though.
Okay.
You took a screenshot, remember?
Yeah.
And I was able to take that information and pass that along.
Oh, wow. I recommend that the city contact Derek Schmidt, our Attorney General for cora violations in relation to said dispute.
Okay.
Would you like me to cite them for you?
Kansas Open Records Act violations are typically handled by the district attorney, I believe, not the Attorney General.
Okay, sure.
And you can file that complaint with the district attorney's office.
Okay, sure. I just want to let you all know, if I happen to file suit against the city, there is part of the Kansas tort law that says that the city can't be sued for laws that it does or does not make. And honestly, I believe I can challenge the constitutionality of said law because...
That is absolutely your right, Mr. Hawley. That would be done in district court.
All right. You realize it potentially put you all out of jobs, right?
If that were the end result, sir, yes.
I believe it would be.
Okay. Again, and we talked about this before, availing yourself of the tools is absolutely your right. And if you feel aggrieved, I encourage you to avail yourself of those tools.
And what steps are the city taking to redress my grievance?
Sir, I've told you.
Yeah, I know. It's the right to sue, but I'm saying, you know said misconduct. I showed you that the file was made 11:04, and my vehicle wasn't supposed to be towed until 11:30.
Okay. So I told you that we've sent that. I don't have any information back yet.
Uh huh. I contacted Mrs. Henson regarding said body camera footage.
Okay.
A really long time ago, and I never heard anything back. So I believe her standing as a police officer should be in question.
Okay. We don't talk about personnel here, Mr. Hawley. Okay? You'll direct any grievance directly to the council, but we don't talk about individuals.
Okay. Can I get the name and address of the custodian of records for each public agency?
That would be the city clerk for the city of Spring Hill. She has, she keeps the records.
Police department. Each governmental agency should...
At the time, it was Sergeant Jorlin.
Okay. So we'll get that information for you. Can we have that available for Mr. Hawley by Monday morning?
I can provide him the Sergeant Jorlin's name and city address.
Yes. Anything else, Mr. Hawley?
I really find this kind of pathetic.
Okay. I'm sorry. The floor remains open. Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda.
May I move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion at a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero zero. Next item on the agenda is board appointments. As I had mentioned to the council, last month, I had some interviews scheduled for Planning Commission. On our Planning Commission, we had more applicants than we did have seats.
That's good.
So I had set up appointments to talk to two proposed new members. Unfortunately, one of the people did not make their appointment and did not return my telephone call, so I'm assuming something had come up. So that left it with three for three. And I offer up as reappointments Steve Sly and Cindy Squire, and as a new appointment, Scott Dootzman.
Make a motion. We accept the appointments to the Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion at a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero zero. Madam Clerk, if you would let the members know, and also if you could, you or Ms. Long reach out to Mr. Dootzman and let him know that he has been appointed. I don't know if he's in the audience. Don't see him. Next item is appointment of a city treasurer. Mr. Hendershot.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor. With the resignation of Ms. Landis as Finance Director, it is important that we appoint that city treasurer position. And it is my recommendation to you, Mayor, and the council, that that person be Luanne Armstrong.
I accept that recommendation and present Luanne Armstrong to be named as the city treasurer pending additional action by the governing body.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion at a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero zero. Item number seven, consideration of resolution. This would be resolution number 2021-r-07. This is regarding designated depositories. Ms. Landis.
Thank you. In order to update that information at each one of our banking institutions, this is a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute resolutions with each of them individually. They each have their own separate forms, which were provided in the packet for you this evening. And the designated banks that we have for the city of Spring Hill currently are First Option Bank, State Bank of Spring Hill, and Tricentry Bank, all local to Spring Hill. The staff to be designated as authorized officers on each of those accounts would be Glenda Garrity, Mayor Ellis, and Luanne Armstrong, being named as the city treasurer, and then also authorized signers. These would be for any transactions, warrant checks, ACH transactions, all of those things that would hit our bank account. In older days, it was just the checks, but now that we have multiple ways of making transactions at the bank, the authorized signers would also include Ashley Wood, who is the deputy city clerk, and she can sign in the absence of the city clerk. So with that, I would ask if you don't have any questions, that we're recommending approval of resolution 2021-r-07. Approval of the resolution relating to the designated depositories of the city of Spring Hill, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute resolutions with those designated depositories.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept resolution 2021-r-07, resolution related to the designated depository of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute resolutions with the designated depositories of the city, and authorize the mayor to designate authorized officers and authorized signatures on the accounts of the designated depository.
Second.
We have a motion at a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries four zero zero. Thank you, Ms. Landis.
Thank you.
We have consideration of a task order approval. Mr. Miller, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Apologize for the jeans. I was out in the field this afternoon. I did not get back to time to change. I come before the council this evening for an action item on a task order for Lamprey-Nirson to perform some improvements in the vicinity of 199th and Webster. As the council's aware, QuickTrip is developing at that area. There's also some other development property that the planning staff has been talking to. And the city has informally agreed to construct a lift station in Force Main, which is required to serve that development and the other developments immediately adjacent to it. Happening at the same time, just by chance almost, the city has had a right, northbound right turn lane on Webster designated as a 2022 cars project in the cars program. And in reviewing the traffic study for the QuickTrip, it became aware that the traffic signal at 199th and Webster will be warranted once the QuickTrip is in operation. So what we want to do is have a design task order for design and construction for all of these three construction elements, the northbound right turn lane, the pump station in Force Main, and the traffic signal. The pump station in Force Main would be bid as a separate project in 2021, because the QuickTrip is going to be under construction or plans to be under construction in August of this year. So we've got to speed that up and get that work put underground in a, along with the QuickTrip construction. And of course, the lift station in Force Main are not cars eligible anyway, so they wouldn't, and they're a different type of work. We're looking for a utility contractor for that work, and of course, we'll be looking for a roadway contractor for the traffic signal in northbound right turn lane. The northbound right turn lane would be bid in early 2022, provided this project is approved for cars funding. And as you're aware, the county will not approve cars projects until after the first of the year, when their budget formally goes into action. So we have to split these into two projects for timing and financial reasons. We do acknowledge in the agreement that the county should pay for 50% of the estimated cost of construction for the northbound right turn lane and signal eligible expenses up to half of the $535,000 eligible cost. An approval of this agreement will allow staff to continue working towards design and construction in 2021, so that we can keep up with the QuickTrip work. The pump station construction costs would be funded from the wastewater utility, which has adequate funds for this purpose. Again, the northbound right turn lane traffic signal would be funded by city funds and 50% of eligible funds from Johnson County. The recommendations being presented in accordance with Section 3 of the Spring Hill Purchasing Policy and the On Call Engineering Agreement with Lamprey-Nirson, at this point, we recommend approval of the task order for design of the listed public improvements at 199th and Webster, and I am open for questions.
So this, this task order is for two separate projects in this year and next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. The, not very. They'll be probably nine months apart. Understandable. Well, and if they, if they were able to build the whole northbound turn lane and a quarter million dollar traffic signal in 25 days, we probably would be there 30, you know, most of the time. But we're currently using one inspector in Spring Hill, Construction Observer, and he is a very busy person and getting busier. So I don't think, you know, this is hourly not to exceed. He won't be out there unless they're doing stuff that needs inspection, because he has a lot of other things to do in the city. So it's just a lug of time. I will say that, you know, if you think there's another appropriate hour, we'd be happy to change that number. I would say that on my two observation jobs this year, I'm in the red on both of them. So we're, we're spending plenty of time trying to make sure that the city gets the, the quality of construction that they deserve. I completely understand, and I think if that were the only job we were doing in Spring Hill, your concern would be valid. But we do have a number of observation actions this year and next year as well that are keeping our staff on your behalf working very busy.
All right. Anyone else would entertain a motion? Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the task order, and staff will continue to work towards design of the project.
Second.
We have a motion at a second. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero zero. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Takes us to the first two discussion items. Chief Henson, if you'll lead us off on the first one.
Good evening. So up for discussion today is the draft order, or the draft ordinance regarding chickens to be included in Chapter 2 of our city ordinances. And as a refresher, the draft, you know, includes the number of hens allowed, the distance from residential structures, which is 30 feet from residential structure, churches, schools, place of business, a minimum of nine feet from side and rear lots. It also addresses the size of coops, how many square feet per chicken, and the minimum height, which is a minimum of five feet to six feet. Owners and persons responsible shall handle the care and disposal of any chicken waste. They must be, the coop, the yard, the run must be kept free of trash and accumulated waste or droppings. Any feed has to be protected to prevent rats, mice, rodents, vermin, and other predators from accessing the feed. And then the coops will be inspected and approved by the building inspector, along with a special permit. This was posted for at least 30 days, you know, give or take, out on social media and on our webpage. We received approximately 42 social media responses and 35 emails of folks who wanted to express their opinion. You were all provided those copies. You know, it's, it's a mix of for and against. Some were concerned about special permits. Some were concerned about the smell and the potential of additional wildlife coming in to eat the chickens. And so anyway, that's kind of where we're at. And there you go.
All right. And this week, we saw a lot of lively discussion coming in through our social media outlets that Mr. Hendershot had forwarded on to us. Council, where do you sit on this issue? Do we need to take it up as a formal action item? Do we have some consensus on the council? Mr. Owen, Mr. Eckert, Mr. Graves, Mr. Leighton?
I, I think it does, is something that needs to come before the council. And if not, the next meeting, the meeting after.
Okay.
I'm hearing a lot of, a lot of favorable opinions and some dissenting as well. So I'm getting good feedback.
Okay. Mr. Owen?
I haven't had much feedback. I've had one, and that's all I've had, and they were for it.
You've got the email that had the...
Had the meeting. I saw that. Personally, I've gotten one. So I'm not sure where the citizens lie with this, really. I'm still kind of puzzled. You know, some people were frustrated about it and concerned. I know some of them need to make sure they understand that if they have an HOA, they may not be able to have it. This doesn't override any HOA rules.
Correct.
So I guess...
That's what I'm trying to get to, Mr. Leighton. I'll be right with you. They both... And then Mr. Leighton, that's what I'm getting to. I'm just calling members individually, okay? So, Mr. Owen, you're, finish up?
I guess if we have the participation and people want it, okay. It's, it's not something I would do or necessarily would want, so I'm, I'm open to it. I think, you know, does the building department have an issue with doing inspections on coops?
Always.
No.
Potential lot of...
We would do whatever the governing body directed. Thank you.
Okay.
So, all right. That's kind of where I'm at. I'm, I'm sitting on the, I'm sitting on the chicken coop.
Very, very good. Mr. Graves?
Hearing both sides of it pretty passionately. I think the interesting thing is what started it all, with the young kids starting the petition, all for that. I don't know. I mean, it's very valid reasons on both sides, and I guess I think it does deserve a vote. And I'd be good voting on it next or the following.
Okay.
Bring it to the council.
I mean, I guess, is there anybody here that's for or against chickens?
Actually, I wanted to, if we're going to have a vote, what I wanted to do is make sure that it was with enough notice so that members of the public could come in. So, I mean, obviously, anybody can jump up and talk about chickens right now. It's, it's a discussion item. Mr. Leighton? Thank you, Mr. Leighton. It seems the consensus, though, is, is that this needs to have a straight up or down vote. Mr. Hendershot, please have this on the last agenda in May.
Sure.
And I would also ask that if our public affairs official could go and tabulate the pros and the cons, and maybe split those up into different lists, it might make it a little bit easier for the council to see what the balance of opinion was.
Yes, sir.
All right. Chief Henson, thank you very much. Now, we're moving on to a few key budget components. Mr. Hendershot? Mr. Hendershot?
Thank you, and good evening again. Tonight, we're going to talk about the budget process and those key components in that budget process. Talk about several things. Part of it will be a review, and then we'll get a little deeper into things such as property taxes and sales tax, et cetera. I need to get this fired up and going here. All right, as you recall, we are in the second year of a biennial budget. Benefits of the biennial budget is that it coincides with the council terms. It does provide a high degree of transparency, and it focuses on those long-range goals and impact of growth. It's also consistent with prioritization from year to year. Year one was the adoption of the 2021 budget, which we're currently working under, and also there was the conditional approval last year of the 2022 budget. So this year's budget process will consist of reviewing that budget and adjust for any changes, and also then proceed with the 2022 formal budget adoption process. Oops, went too far there. Nope, no, it didn't. There we go. The, one of the big changes you'll see in this year's process is due to the recent adoption of Senate Bill 13, which some people refer to as the Truth in Taxation Bill. What this bill does is it no longer has a tax-led calculation. It introduces what is called a revenue-neutral rate, and it's focused on that mill levy. The county clerks will calculate and notify the cities of that revenue-neutral rate and their assessed valuation by June of, by June 15th of this year. The city then notifies the county clerk by July 20th of any intent to exceed that rate. And what we're talking about here is, and Ms. Landis, help me if I misspeak here, what we're talking about here is the, any increase in appraised value does not necess, the mill levy would, your taxes would remain the same, the mill levy would drop if the appraised values go up, okay? So in order to look at those increased appraised values as an increased source of revenue for the city, then you would need to go through this public hearing process. That public hearing is set, if there is a need by the city or a desire by the city to exceed that rate, and that public hearing must be held between August 20th and September 20th. The budget here, and it's held by September 20th, and then the certification of the budget would then be completed and submitted to the county by October 1st. If there is a reason that, or if the cities, a city decides not to have that public hearing, and they exceed that neutral, or that neutral balance or this truth in taxation law, then there are provisions for penalties. If the city was to elect to not look at the public hearing process, then the budget deadlines default to what we currently have now, which is certification by August the 25th. The key components in a budget consist of, one of the key components anyways, is that property appraisal. And that's completed by the county as of January 1. Property owners then get their notices, and it's based on that fair market value or resale price, if you will. That is then turned into an assessed valuation, which is the appraised value multiplied by an assessment ratio. And here you can see the four different categories for those assessment ratio categories. So a residential lot, a residential property then would be, their assessed value would be determined by an 11 and a half percent rate, and on down the list there. The value of a mill then takes that assessed valuation and divides that by 1,000. So for the 21 budget, the value of a mill in Spring Hill, our total valuation is $105,217,741. You take that value, divide it by 1,000, that gives you the value of one mill is $105,217. We have exceptions there, depending on if you're in the fire or no-fire area. So in the fire contract area, the value of that mill is reduced to $55,400 for 2021. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about this, what we're going to call a blended value. The total ad valorem taxes that are needed for property funds, for tax funds, to support our general fund, our debt, our fire and cemetery, you take that and you divide it by the value of a mill. And in this case, it's $3,555,937. The blended value of the fire, no-fire mill equals out to be $89,658 per mill. So take that value, that valuation, or that property tax need of 3.5 million, divided by the $89,658 value of one mill, and that equals the current tax rate of 39.661 tax rate for Spring Hill. So to look at that, what that means for a property owner, you take the appraised value, and in this time, in this instance, we'll use the example of a $200,000 home. You take that times the 11 and a half percent ratio that we talked about earlier, that gives you a figure of 23,000. Divide that by 1,000, so your assessed, or your assessed value is now 23,000, divide that by the 1,000, which is the value, or not the value of the mill, but that's what the mill levy is based on, and that equals 23. Take that 23 times your 39.661 mill levy that we currently have, and that equals the city's portion of your tax bill at $912.20. Again, I emphasize that that's the city's portion of the tax bill, and we'll get into that here just a little bit more in just a minute. There was a request for some comparison data. Ms. Landis and her team have completed that work, and here we have broken down the Spring Hill different areas, the Johnson County area, the Miami County area, the combined area, which would be the Miami County and the fire, and then the no-fire areas. And you can see that in the no-fire area, then the mill levy is, lasts at 26.631 mills. It's also based on the population. Population in each of those areas is calculated there. We know the assessed tangible valuation in each of those areas. So it comes out, again, at the 39.661. The last column there is the total mills levied by all units in the city of Spring Hill, and in the case of the Johnson County side, the total mill levy for all taxing units is 160.586, and you can see the other areas there, and their total mill levy by all the taxing units. We were also asked to look at how that compares to other communities. And by other communities, we looked at those that are experiencing similar growth, perhaps not so much similar populations, but that are experiencing a great deal of growth, such as Spring Hill is. So we looked at Derby, which is just outside of Wichita, Olathe, Lenexa, Andover, which is another community just outside of Wichita, Gardner, and Baser. And here you can see where, how those played out. You can see the population figures there, the total assessed tangible valuation, and how that works out into a total city mill levy, and then also how that compares to those individuals and their complete levied tax bill by all units. So for all intents and purposes, at 39.661, we're in the range of these other communities that are experiencing growth when you look at the overall picture there. These graphs here illustrate in blue the portion of an individual in the city of Spring Hill, depending on their situation, if they are in Miami County, and that includes the city fire levy, if they're in the Johnson County and in the fire levy area, or if they're in the no-fire levy. The blue represents of the total tax bill that a homeowner in Spring Hill represents. The blue is the city's portion of that tax bill. The remainder would be the other taxing entities, such as county, community college, school, rec, those. Again, it's, it represents the city's portion of that tax bill. Looking now at a little bit different material, or different items, and that would be sales tax. We currently have a city sales tax rate of 1.5%. Overall, sales tax total is 9.45475 on the Johnson County side, Miami County side is 9.5. The difference there is that quarter cent sales tax that the Miami County voting constituents approved. Looking at how that compares to the same communities that we did our comparisons with of Derby, Olathe, Lenexa, you can see that some have that same 1.5 city sales tax, and then in addition, 9.475 is a fairly common number there. Some are a little less than that. The city of Andover would be the exception there at 7 and a half percent sales tax. Looking at, or another request for information that we received was for total bonded indebtedness. You see the city of Spring Hill there, the total bonded indebtedness, 26 million, 26.8 million, 1.6 million in temporary notes, and then 2 million in other, in other debt. Using those same communities, then, you can see that, obviously, those, some of these communities are a greater population, so you would expect them to have a greater debt. But if you, again, if you break that down, we're right there with most cities, if not just a little bit lower, as far as our total bonded indebtedness, 25,008, or 25 million. The note down there at the bottom says that the industrial revenue bonds are not included in these debt calculations. With that, Mayor and Council, I am available for questions. Ms. Landis is available for question. I hope this touched on many of the points, critical points for how a budget is, how we determine the values of mills, et cetera, and how that mill levy is put into place, as long as with some sales tax information. So I'm happy to answer questions, along with Ms. Landis.
Couple of things that I want to point out. First of all, the city fire, for those who live in the, in the contract area, that 13.03 mills does not go to the city of Spring Hill. That pays for our contract with Fire District 2. Those of us who live in the taxing district of Fire District 2, we pay the 26.631 mills to the city of Spring Hill, but we are taxed separately for, for fire. Mr. Hendershot or Ms. Landis, what is the Fire District 2 tax rate, mill levy?
Do you have that, Ms. Landis?
I do. One second. It is 17.425.
So for those who are in the contract area for the city of Spring Hill, we're able to drive a little better value of the 13.031 mills. That's something that we continuously work on with county to try and keep that mill levy down as much as possible. So the actual mill levy for, for all residents of what stays in the city is the 26.631 mills, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Very good. Other council members? Questions? Comments?
Is this going to be available online or hard copy of something we can look at if we want to?
We certainly can put this presentation online, yes, sir.
For all of us and for the citizens?
Sure. We can do that.
Mr. Hendershot?
Yes.
Do you mind if I add just a couple of things? That'd be okay. We do put all of our budget presentations online, so if you were to go to the finance page, under the budget tab, everything that we've presented or bring to you will, is posted out there, will be posted out there. A couple of just things that I wanted to just double back to this new Senate bill that's going to be in play. The new budget forms have come out from the state, so we will be working towards getting those done, at least mostly filled in shortly, of course, then a lot of that information, the valuation, all of that won't come in until June. The point there being that when you do consider that in the future, and that revenue-neutral rate, and whether or not you want to exceed that or not, keep in mind that part of your appraisal, your assessed valuation increase, comes from changes in property that either weren't on the tax roll before, or have changed uses over time. And so while we understand, and this is a conversation that has been circulating between other cities and the league, and is while we understand that that is a touchy subject, and you will be holding a separate public hearing in order to exceed that revenue-neutral rate, that revenue-neutral rate is equivalent to what you collected last year. So for the 22 budget, it would be equivalent to the amount of dollars that you have for this year's budget. If you need to make up the difference, you'll have to make that up in other revenue sources, but at a minimum, consider whether or not you want to, at a minimum, look at those changed dollars, because those are taxes that have never been on the tax roll before, or values never on the tax roll. The, there is a lot of detail in that slideshow, just so that you understand. I understand it was a lot to look at this evening, but for the purpose of putting it online, it does give a reference point for people to be able to go back and see how we do calculate our mill levy, and how they can calculate what their taxes are going to be, when their valuation, or when their appraised value comes out to them and it goes up. The reason for the calculations on how a lot of that was done is because I have gotten multiple requests for, requests on how do these things get calculated, so that some of our public can actually calculate impacts of new projects on their own, ahead of those being approved. So we want to make sure that everyone has that information. That's why it's in here. The other information that's included for the data, the select data, those, that, those cities were part of 10 fastest-growing cities in Kansas. Those were just a few that Mr. Leighton and I had worked on pulling some data out. If you remember at a previous council meeting, the mayor had asked Mr. Leighton and I to work together on pulling together some of that information. I did mention to Mr. Leighton earlier this evening, and to you all, if there are other calculations you'd like to see from this data, or if there's other data that you'd like to see, we do have, the league did come out with their new publication for the Kansas tax rate and fiscal data, which is where the bulk of this information came from, as well as their website. So if there is something else that you're looking for, we'll go ahead and send this out, probably also post the link on our website, so that our public can go out and look for that as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, sir. Oh, Mr. Leighton, Mr. Leighton, if you could hold on, I was actually, there's an audience member who had a question. Go right ahead. That's, that is all right.
I just wanted to ask, at the 26 to 30 million dollars in debt we are, how much a year do we pay in interest?
Give that number, Ms. Landis, and some of that debt is going to be benefit district debt.
Some of it is. If you give me a minute, I can pull up the most recent Senate report.
Sure, certainly. Mr. Leighton, go ahead. Mr. Leighton, go ahead. All right. Thank you very much.
So, Mayor, if I were to look ahead at, like, say, twenty-twenty-two, our total principal based off of that twenty-five million, or what will be about twenty-four million, um, total principal per year would be about one point, just under one-point-seven million, about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in interest.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Anything else? That will take us to announcements and reports. A couple of things, um, as each of you know, a group of citizens in rural Miami County have banded together to form the city of Golden, and they have petitioned the Miami County Commission to take that issue up. The Miami County Commission has set that for sometime in June. I don't remember the exact date, June twenty-third. I just got the high sign. Um, and I would like to get the council's consensus for the city of Spring Hill to get behind this. The issues of impacting the residents in that area are really, at its most fundamental level, property rights. The ability to be able to manage their own destiny and the ability to set their own laws and govern themselves. And I cannot think of a more basic American right than that. And I am absolutely excited to get behind that, and I'd like the council to do that as well. I've asked Mr. Hendershot to begin working on a draft letter. I'll put the finishing touches on it. Obviously, I can't send that without the council's consent. I can send it on my own, but I'd like to have the council's support. I do want to tell you that I did hear of one alleged issue about Golden being formed in Miami County, and that was the fact that they would take a share of the Miami County sales tax, but not contribute to it. First of all, the author of that complaint is informed. There is a business in the corp, what will be the corporate limits of Golden that collects a fairly significant amount of sales tax. I also think that's a relatively myopic view of the issue. The people in Golden are going all throughout Miami County and spending money and getting no direct benefit from it, such as other cities get from that. I want to address that in that letter of support as well. I know a few people that live in that area. I love, uh, there's a family there that I absolutely love. I've asked a few residents from that area to come out, and I'd like them to be able to just talk briefly about why they are so passionate about this issue. I believe their formal leader is Jennifer Williams. Ms. Williams, would it be, would it be okay with you if you addressed the council? Please come on up, and if you would, state your name and address for the clerk.
Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
My name's Jennifer Williams, and I live at two-one-nine-nine-three Moonlight Road in Spring Hill, Kansas. So, thank you for letting us be here tonight. Um, this is an important issue for us. As you mentioned, the property rights are the biggest. Um, we are finding ourselves in a position of being surrounded by development that's not a fit in our neighborhood, and we have no say. We have no vote. Uh, we're not constituents for that city, and it is going to surround us if we aren't given the opportunity to build that wall and protect our property rights in our neighborhood. And so, um, so far, two-hundred-and-eighty-six people have signed our petition before we turned it in. Um, we have about three-hundred-and-eleven homes, so that was a significant number for just the week that we put together. And as we go between now and the twenty-third, more homeowners are getting on board and having the opportunity to hear about it and everything. And so, um, we just appreciate any support that everyone can give us, um, so that as we go before the commissioners, and we need that unanimous support of them, they can recognize that we all are in this together and that, you know, we have to unite if we're gonna win this fight of the property owners being able to protect what's ours. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. One of the other things that we look at when we have a, a really unique opportunity like this to, to have a new city formed right next door to us, is that opportunity to demonstrate to other communities the need for municipalities to work together, to share resources, to brainstorm together. That is just good government. And with Golden, if it's approved and they are able to become a corporation, um, I think that's a wonderful opportunity for the city of Spring Hill to set an example for the rest of the state. So, I am requesting the council's permission to draft a letter of support to the Miami County Commission that we are behind the formation of the city of Golden. Council members?
Yes. That sounds good to me.
All right. Very good. Mr. Ecker?
Absolutely.
All right. Mr. Graves?
Yeah. And I would say, uh, I know the work that they've put into it, talking to them, and, uh, huge proponent of it. Rooting for you guys, really want to get behind that.
Terrific. Mr. Leighton? All right. Mr. Ervello, you had a comment?
Uh, yeah. I, I know that, uh, city on the planning commission, one of the things that we were, obviously been talking about is, uh, the expansion of the, of city limits of Spring Hill.
Mm-hmm.
Is that gonna hinge on the review of that particular item?
No. No. It certainly will not. Very good. Mr. Hendershot, if you would continue marshaling forward with, um, getting a draft for me, then I will review that, put the finishing touches on it, send it out to the council, and, and then get it to the Miami County Commission. Those of you who are in the pending city of Golden, you have the support of the city of Spring Hill, and we are very excited for you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, what were the boundaries of that? I didn't catch your address, ma'am.
Ms. Williams, would you mind giving us the boundaries of Golden? If, if you could come back up, I'm sorry. It just, it's easier for people online who may be watching to hear.
And Mayor, I have some maps that I can put up on the, on the screen this evening.
Oh, terrific. Terrific.
So, our northern border is the county line at two-hundred-and-fifteenth Street, and then our western border goes about a mile west of Waverly up to two-hundred-and-twenty-third, and then it comes Waverly from two-twenty-third south. And we're Cedar Isles on the east, and then our southern border is mostly two-hundred-and-thirty-ninth, with a little bit of up and down there through the Corlans, so.
Very good. All right. One last thing. Um, QPR training is this Saturday. That is being sponsored by the Chamber Advent Health and about fifteen or twenty local businesses. QPR stands for question, persuade, and refer. It is a suicide awareness training program. We have one session at nine AM and another session at ten-thirty. In order to participate, the, um, organizers are asking that you sign up. If you go to the Chamber's website, you'll find the QPR, uh, flyer, and you'll be able to click the link to go to the signup for that. So, those interested would certainly encourage that, and that's all I have. Mr. Owen?
Uh, just one thing, Mayor. To Mr. Hendershot, you know, we, in our, um, bills we paid tonight, we paid for conduit, uh, being put in the ground by, uh, Kansas Fiber Net.
Mm-hmm.
And we had talked in December about a project to, to work on that further, to do some more work on conduit. And I was just wondering if we have a status on that project.
I'm sorry? Okay.
We do have a project set up to track those expenses. And it will, so because the expense happened in April on your April financial reports, and that new project report that we then started into those reports, you'll see the, that in there.
I think what I'd like to see, Mr. Owen and I talked about this as well. I think what, what we would like to see is a project plan where, I, I understand we have some security concerns, and if they're security-related, then I believe that there may be an exception. But at a minimum, I need to see a project plan. I need to see a budget, and it really needs to be approved by the council. So, let's get that on the agenda in May before any other dollars are spent, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly. Anything else?
Nope. That covers it.
All right. Uh, Mr. Ecker?
My questions have been answered with what just Mr. Owen just showed. But good luck to the city of Golden and your development and going forward. That must be exciting times for you. Exciting, I think, here, too.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
That is it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leighton, I'm so sorry, sir. I forgot you. You're on the phone. All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Graves?
Uh, I will be at the QPR training. I don't know if we need to let Glenn to know, but I will be there.
Yeah. If there are any council members planning ongoing, certainly, please let the city clerk know.
And then I did want to acknowledge, uh, there was really no other word for it but horrific, uh, issue involving a local dog and family, Frisco. Uh, just keeping the Kaiser family in our thoughts, and, uh, just an awful, awful tragedy.
Mm-hmm.
Heartbreaking.
Absolutely. Moving on to staff reports. Mr. Hendershot?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, happy to announce that we have hired a new person for a public affairs specialist position. Name is Kristen Boxman, and Kristen should be available to come meet the council at the, at the May thirteenth. Uh, she began her duties today and, uh, with some cross-training with Kate Schupert, uh, who is, who will be soon leaving our employment. Uh, we have begun filling the pool, the aquatic center pool. Uh, unfortunately, we have located a leak, but we're early in the process. We've identified where it is. Uh, it's about seven-and-a-half feet deep, so we'll be getting it, getting it that very early this year, uh, and getting that repaired. The other, other work at the pool is completed. The painting project is, is completed. Our guys have been very busy, uh, updating many of the amenities and, and, uh, getting the pool ready, so we are, we are working rapidly towards that. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Madam Clerk?
No report. Thank you.
Ms. Landis?
I do have a few things. Um, the December reports, uh, the updated December reports with the new balances, since we've done our, we've, um, our audit early, so we have the new numbers in there. Um, ending fund balances have been resent to you. Um, they'll be posted on the website tomorrow. We're, um, also updating then the fund balance, um, and budget reports for January through March. Those should be up and ready, um, for public viewing again here soon, um, on the website. And additionally, like I mentioned, there has been an addition of a new project report added to those monthly financial reports. We're continuing to add new information as we go. Um, but if you have questions on that, please let us know. Um, the, I mentioned earlier that Kansas tax rate and fiscal data information that we have, we'll be sending that out. There is some inaccurate information about Spring Hill in that publication, so we'll be noting on the document what the accurate information is. The league held a training last week, and besides covering SB thirteen, which is huge for every city in Kansas, um, they also provided a lot of very useful information. Um, it is a lot of pages to look through, but I will, um, try to, if they're gonna publish that to their website, try and, uh, put a link out there to get to that, because it does talk about other resources for budgeting. It talks about, um, just accounting and fund accounting, and how you account for governmental projects, things like that in general, um, as well as a little bit of legal, um, a couple of legal topics that are out there as well. We are still hiring for lifeguards and swim instructors for our pool. Um, you do not have to be a lifeguard or a certified lifeguard in order to be a swim instructor, and there will be training provided for that, as well as we are providing our on, own onsite lifeguard training this year. Um, and so, if, if, um, there's anybody out there still, you know, gunning for that summer job, we have them for you. And then I just wanted to thank the council and staff for, this is my last council meeting, and that I've been here for twelve very rewarding years, so I appreciate that. And before I leave, with about a week and a couple of days, we're planning on preparing your base budget. Um, I want to leave guidance on a, on several open projects and prepare that first quarter financial review that I would have normally given you, um, in person. I'll be sending that out via email and then posting that to the website as well. Um, and then if you have any questions before I leave, please feel free to get with me about those.
All right.
Thanks so much.
We appreciate the commitment and dedication to the citizens of Spring Hill, and we wish you the absolute best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Chief Henson?
So, Saturday is going to be a busy day. Not only, uh, there's daffodil days, but we also have drug takeback. Uh, so if you have any, uh, unused prescription drugs in your cabinets, uh, in your homes, um, drop by, um, between ten and two, ten AM and two PM, this Saturday at the, uh, Spring Hill Police Department, and we will collect those. Uh, no questions asked. You just drop them in the box, and off you go.
Is there a drug reallocation asking for a friend?
Yeah.
No?
No.
That's fine. Just a question.
Uh, yeah. Our, uh, our newest officer started on Monday. His name is Sam Tallman. Uh, he will be attending the academy starting next Wednesday, so we're excited that he is here. We recently recognized Officer Ash and Officer Steiner for Distinguished Service Award for their efforts in handling a call involving a resident who was in crisis. Uh, Officer Ash's familiarity with this person allowed officers to locate their location very quickly, and they were able to get ca- the care required. Um, the, uh, the officers did not know where this person was, but his familiarity was able to, to identify where we would find this person and, and, uh, and it made a huge impact. So, just wanted to share that with you all. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Burton?
I think I, we continue to issue permits. Last council meeting, we were at ninety. We're at a hundred and four now, new single families. Uh, and there's several developments that'll be coming before you, uh, as well as the, uh, planning commission, but that's all. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Burton, Mr. Jenkins?
No report, Mayor.
All right. That concludes the meeting for today. Would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four-zero-zero. We are adjourned.